Or whether it was just lifted off its hinges or whatever. But the question I'm going to ask Adam is, if we do the bollard system, do we have to ask permission from and get this man to sift the soil? Sift the soil and all this sort of thing, that is going to cost a lot of money unless we put it off cut close. Can we be devious enough to?
Well, it's not on cut close, it's actually, it would be on the pavement bar, it's on the tar line area. But we can double check with.
Sorry. Yeah, I was just gonna through your answer to the councillor's question, I believe, when I asked about it, because I did think of a memorial gate, but the reason the original gate may have been taken away is it's because it was one of those quite dangerous gates which had been removed from Rita was a white thing, I was told, but swung over. But that's what I was told, but I wasn't here then. And that suggestion for the site near Burley Road car park is if we had some of the ones like the church put along that boundary, then that's not, that's not offence. The grope packs bollards with an opening for the car boot sales and whatever, I think would be a substantial block there.
But this is anywhere off the entrance.
Yes, yes.
But it was just, I mean, if you're gonna look into the whole thing and bring it back to council.
Yeah, I think, I think we've debated it enough. I mean, all we're asking here is that the clerk identified us as suitable style and prices. We're not going ahead with it, it will come back to us. But I think the, you know, the clerk. And yeah, that's what we're gonna say, if council allow, can we age with the clerk? And I think we need to liaise with the county council as well.
Well, that's, sorry, Jim, that's why I asked if we can absolutely, I can make an amendment that they look in at the same time because it costs. If you do a job all at once, if the assistant clerk, the clerk, sorry, and, and Adam would look at the the other access point as well at the same time to bring back to council.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm gonna focus on this one.
Yes. Okay, if you want, we can.
Can I say now, right, I was just gonna say, it all sounds tacky and nasty because I see nobody opening up and it's so nice. And I think we are the county town of Britain and if we can only have sticky upards in such an important place, then it's very sad.
I'll look, I'll look at everybody from the bits of that, which would give you.
So I want to.
I think the proposal is the clerk, in conjunction with council alone, will look at different styles of options with pricing, check the county council and bring it back to the council. The reason I didn't do all this legwork before, oh, get it, so that we're doing work and then finally just sell it at the last price. So I thought.
Could you bring it right, Richard?
That's good, that's good. So it's amazing what I'll do.
I'll second that. So Ivan wants to do that, we worked hard.
All in favour?
Yeah.
Thank you, Adam.
Next again? One again.
I look at a bollard as ten.
I think it's a waste of time, personally, but that's my.
We can, we can. We'll have another look at it when we get the quotes.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I think.
Number sixteen, head forwarding, Burley Road allotments and Lady Wall Park. And it's case one one. Now, I think the clerk has got some other questions.
I put, you might find, I put this down. It's like, that's basically our. Yeah.
We're done.
And the gentleman that has written this on this bit here. And which bit was this, the other bit? Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, basically, he'd like the hedge pulled out or removed and a concrete fence, sorry, a fence with concrete posts put in and with the financial contribution from the council. Now, I have spoken to him, he is. I, I think he's bought the house recently, he's in the process of renovating it and it hasn't, previous people, tenants or owners, that it hasn't been maintained at all on the side of the boundary of the house. Now, the hedge hasn't also been properly maintained by our allotment holders. Now, I've got the lease now, I have reminded them that they should have had, they should have been maintaining the hedge, which they've now taken aboard and they now are getting quotes to, to get it, to get it rectified. Now, the thing is already, because this has been on the agenda, already I've had people from more residents in this area now saying, oh, well, I quite like my limits done. I have been out there and I've met the allotment holders. Now, where back of the house, they use the back entrance because that's where the car park is. There is a bit which is onto the car park, which, which we do need, which I've recommended that we do cut back, which is neat, but, and then the allotment holders to then, to, as per their lease, to cut back, right back on their boundary. Now, I've said to the gentleman today that whatever is resolved tonight, that he could put a fence on his side, his boundary, on his side. He's obviously, he's a very nice gentleman, but he's obviously a bit concerned because he's thinking if the hedge isn't maintained in the, in the future, that it's gonna push onto his fence. And the only thing is, if we've got three allotments, twelve thought close for our, we'd say, there's houses that run all at the back of there. If you do it for one, it's gonna open.
Access to president.
Right, well, thanks for that, yes, I mean, we must watch the precedent. There are three allotments and what is proposed here is some sort of compromise where we're doing something.
Yeah, so, which is, I mean, the gentleman has kindly done this actually. So really, if we look on here.
It's on the eight two C, doesn't it? It's on the eighty two C.
Well, yeah, but there's, there's also, there's, there's somebody else from another part of that area is now come forward as well.
Which, which house, though?
Well, no, we're not discussing, we're not discussing that, that's, that's not on the agenda, but it's this bit, so that the allotment society are gonna have to cut back, hold the hedge on their side, but then council, which is resolved to, to cut this bit back here in the car park.
I can ask you who belongs to the car park unless it's also R C C?
Well, I imagine the car park will even belong to the houses or to the houses. However, that is, that, the hedge is ours.
But it's part of the allotment, take it back.
Yeah. Which is our, which is our, which he lives to them.
I think, I think Alison has been correct in saying as well, she pointed out that the rid of president, yeah. I should be perfectly honest with you. If I owned eighty two C and the eight is out of the ground, I'd get out there with my shares and get it cut, it's in my garden. It's like the lady who lived next door to me, God bless her, the tree she had in her garden, no, my garden. I had quite the right to cut all the branches down, but we didn't because it would unbalance the tree. But that was my right and, and yes, we probably, probably, I'm likely to have to do the garden part, to be honest with you, but yes, the lease, the, the, allotment holders should maintain their lease because that's what they've agreed to do. If it's in, if it's in, if it's overgrain somebody's private garden, it's their responsibility, not the council's. It's, it's like me going around and saying, I want to cut Adam's hedge. Well, again, look, brilliant, I'm good, I think. And I do, it just, just doesn't sit well with me at all. And I know we have, do have responsibilities, but this age, looking at this age, it's not been, it's not been cut by the householder in at least two years. And I think, at least two years, at least two years. And I just think we should get the, the lot holders to tidy it up on their side. And if they want to, the householders want to cut it or they don't like it or want to put the fence up, that's up to them. My next door neighbour's doing exactly the same. She put a fence, a six foot fence up at the front of their, of their house, they joined my property. But she, she's on the inside, the fence boundary, so I've ended up with the back, not the front, because it's on her property. So I shall be very.
I suppose Alison had to bring it to council because a member of the public's requested or more than one. But I agree with councillor Romilly, when I looked at these photographs, and I know the owner very well, I actually nearly bought that house. It's tucked right on the corner, looks out over the allotments. But I feel if we did agree to do this and it includes the car park, which are owned by the houses, they have allotted spaces which come with it, then you can come and cut my hedge. That's, that's the way I looked at it when I saw the pictures. We can't go into people's gardens and spend taxpayers' money on cutting a hedge because it's grown. That's the unfortunate thing, they have a shared boundary. I see from the report that the allotment society don't wanna talk about it. And that seemed to me that there must be some sort of neighbourly dispute, which we probably as councillors shouldn't get involved in. But if the clerk can mediate and point out constantly to the allotment society, you are responsible for that. And to the residents, well, we're sorry, you know, this is in your car park, it's in your garden and we don't have to be sort of saying, well, if it was in mine, I'd chop it because that might seem a bit sarcastic or something. But I think it has to be clearly said, it's not our responsibility. If we take the allotment control management back, then it would be our problem to make sure that it didn't grow over and fall into their property.
I, I don't know where I've read it, but I would definitely not agree with the hedge being taken away. No. At all. We have so little hedgerows in this country nowadays. I want to protect that hedge.
Just makes me.
Just a quick one. In, in the pack, the state invoice, I'm assuming this is a quote rather than an invoice.
This, this. It was a quote, this quote didn't come from me, this quote was given to me by the, by the member of the public.
I'll, I'll, I was considering, it's not any liability, we don't.
It's that quote, that quote was what the gentleman has received. I was hoping for some financial contribution.
I wonder if you mentioned that. Quite a lot to cut a little bit of hedge.
That's the defence, I think.
It just says that the hedge is approximately seven feet tall, but later on, they say that they have cut it back several times, six feet. It's not grown that much in a year, so.
Right, well, we've got a recommendation, are we going against the recommendation?
Can I let somebody more level of function make a proposal?
Well, it's your ward.
Yes, but we don't support this, but we're tactful. And you know, that the clerk might write on behalf of the council and highlight to the resident who is responsible for what. And that is that they are responsible for their side of the boundary. And the letter is also sent to the allotment society, reminding them they are responsible, possibly because it's more on their boundary, the height of it, and what falls into their gardens as such. And hopefully that will.
Yeah, the allotment.
Resolve the matter, but we should not be authorising any, I don't approve authorising any expenditure for the council.
I've spoken, the allotment people, when I met them, were more than, they, they completely took aboard that they, that they've not cut it back as they should. And they are obtaining quotes now.
To do it themselves.
Perfectly helpful, couldn't have been nicer.
I wondered why we have, we really know disrespecting you, Alison, but on the website, we say we manage these allotments for the community. Why we have no representation on the, well, we've ran them or something, but why we have no representation? Where we can stop this coming to council, say, if Adam was on, on the committee, it could be something.
Well, can we get this to a proposal?
Yeah, that is the proposal, it's that we, that the clerk sends a letter to all parties explaining their responsibilities. We don't need to see, we don't need to see that, but we, but, and also that we don't approve any expenditure.
So we're not cutting the hedge back in the car?
No, they, they own that and I know that for a fact because I looked at that.
Shall I go and call him over?
Yeah. Thank you, Jim.
Only for the fact that the hedging the car park is our responsibility.
Why, it's our land.
No, the car park isn't our. So I get that. Reasoning, so we don't need to debate that. Okay, I'm against it.
I've seen it a lot of times.
It's the end of it, we're not discussing it.
End. We voted, let's move on. Right, number seventeen, this is just. We're relating, we had a meeting. Was, we're doing the last one, we believe, and deputy and chief exec, there are various things that were discussed. No, no decisions were made, but they're there for your information. And we will be bringing some of it back to for the council and others you may want to liaise yourselves. So the next one is.
Can I just, thank you, make just a quick comment, but that's a great improvement, that we know what's going on and, and hope that we continue with that.
Well, we intend to do that, we've got quarterly meetings, we've already got one planned for, I think, the end of, early December.
Thank you.
Right, eighteen, conciliation regarding councillor and council. There's quite a long report from the chairman who has seen a firm that can provide conciliation.
Observation, chairman. Sorry, I have an observation or a comment I'd like to make. We won't get into detail on this. The, because, because of how deeply meaningful this conciliation is, is meant to be, I believe that the, the whole of the council should be present when it's discussed. Because if this council members here now resolve to do it, but the other three members are here, do not agree with it, then straight away conciliation hits a rock in the road. And so I cannot support this paper move forward this evening. I would suggest that it is deferred when the whole of the council is present to make a decision. Because I'm not prepared to authorise eleven thousand pounds of taxpayers' money. Based on the fact that not the whole of the council is here. Because if it's a whole council decision, which is what the monitor officer has said, they should all be behind it. Chair, thank you.
Right, thanks for that observation. Well, hang on, that's only in our as well.
I would echo everything, and I was just gonna mention that Adam did put it in, the monitor officer wrote to me this week and, because I was trying to clarify some points and she said that her recommendation is that it should only go forward if all members were involved and we had quite an absence this evening. So I would propose that it is deferred and it could be that we have an extra meeting just to discuss that at some point when everybody is going to be here. Just, it could be just a five minute thing to say yes or no, isn't it? It doesn't need a lot of discussion, it's a very well written report.
Right, concerns, observations. There are two recommendations, I mean, do you want to do that? I mean, number one, Mr Grimes is invited, Gordon Grimes is a member of the conduct committee and he's willing to come and speak to us free, gratis in that role. And I think that worth, is worthwhile because all new members should have trading, training in the code of conduct. And that is a mechanism to do that. You know, it's not just the, well, there's, there's one new one here, I don't think Andy has trained in it. So we are a bit remiss on that. Now, whether you wanna defer that decision as well or whether you wanna accept that part.
Conciliation is the whole council, it's not just new ones, I mean, it should be everybody working.
No, that's what we said.
Given a citation, should be.
So that's the order.
So do we, have a proposal? It's free, it's second stage, it's free. He is a member of the conduct committee, he's an independent, he's not a county councillor, he's an independent member. Gordon Grimes, he's, I know him, he's been on ten odd years, I should think. So he knows it inside out, he would give us a good basic grounding. And I think any member who's been a parish councillor, town councillor for a couple of years or so, probably hasn't had training. And it would.
It would be great.
So my suggestion would be we would approve that part and then defer the other part. But, you know, I need a proposal, chairman.
Well, obviously, there's already any part where I think Martin sort of said he would wanna defer the main conciliation paper. So, so that is already on the table. So, but yeah, I would have been your thoughts that if Mr Grimes is invited to provide governance training to the council, I'd be happy to support that as well. And so, so that part I'd go for, but the conciliation part I'll defer along the report line.
So that's a proposal.
A proposal, absolutely, I think fantastic.
Yeah, all in favour?
Yeah.
Great, that's the training.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other closing was Martin's about deferring the conciliation.
I mean, the only practical consideration, we might find we have apologies at the next meeting, but I think at some stage we're gonna have to go with it. And we're really missing one, but I agree, we're missing a bit of a core.
At least a key one, which is the chairman.
Right, so we're doing well, we've prepared one after we've deferred.
We have to.
Yeah, training's been done.
Do, we'll contact Gordon Grimes. All right, okay.
We need to defer to our chairman.
We need to get second to defer, which is next.
Oh, I thought we'd done that.
No, no, we've only done the training one. The training, the training one, we've prepared.
Second, yeah, okay.
This is second to me.
I thought we would.
I think you just get it done.
All in favour? Right, number nineteen, Rockwell Community Trust, a parent's end, there's a letter here. I mean, it's a good cause, but again, financial regulations, no property should be sold or leased without your financial support council, which we're doing. But it, there should be a business case presented and we should be making sure we get value for money. We may need a surveyor or solicitor, there's a number of ramifications here. The, the standing orders also talk about possible consultation with the public if you're doing this. That may be going too far, but there, there are a number of points about this. The other thing, I do know the clerk had the file out because there is a rent review. And obviously, it's pointless doing the rent review when the, we're in this position because the value is, is gonna go up if they are extending the, the building. So just, that's a few things as a preamble, councillor Boris.
Yes, it's in our ward, open south east. So I was surprised when this came, but not surprised because for some reason I did note as a member of the public that it was highly likely that as it went through very quietly, leased in February two thousand and twelve, for some reason I noted on my minutes, plus my agenda, sorry, plus my blog, that it's highly likely that this is gonna be built on in the future. I can't remember why, two thousand and twelve is a long time away. But what I'm very concerned about, yes, it's a good cause. And when it came to council, from what I can remember back to two thousand and twelve, we were told, as I say we, because I'm a resident then, and I was here for every meeting, we were told that they wanted the land for contained allotments for the residents. No mention publicly was ever made of buildings, I don't know why that comment was ever in my mind and written down, but something happened. The trust, you know, we, we've given them that land for eighty four years. Well, basically, leased, leased, it's my worst feeling, leased it. Well, you know, it's a reasonable amount of money, four hundred and something pounds a, a year. But I've made a request for the allotment act. I've made a request for the lease, particularly of that one, because I can't make a decision tonight saying yes or no without seeing the facts. Because I don't know whether these spots signed to say that in the future you can come back to council with a, to seek permission to build. And if we say no, we look stupid. And also, I believe that because we are a local authority, that land, and I don't know how the building got built in the first place on the other piece we leased, I believe, and I'm not an expert, but I have seen a lot of campaigns in the media and the allotment act that protects land. So I would object on the basis that it's going to be a loss of allotment land. The trust could be gone in twenty, thirty years, then we're stuck with possibility of having a private company. Now, the perfect example of that is the Pairs Arms Houses in Peterborough. When they set up that trust, they didn't think it was ever gonna go. It's now the premises for Pizza Ask, you know, it's, anything can happen. If we say residential flats on that land, that's it, the land is gone. And the value of that land, and it was just off the top of the head, somebody told me today, if we were to sell it for that, we would expect to get probably in the region of about two hundred and fifty thousand pounds for it. And that was just a figure off. So, you know, it's, it's a very valuable piece of land for what they're proposing. Also, if you ever look at there, there is no proper road to it. It's a concrete drive which already has serious problems and access issues because of, everybody has to have a car, whether they're going to the allotment or whatever, and the planning matter considerations we found out on trading is traffic. We can say no on that basis. We have a children's play area which is opening up onto that drive. And if you were to go down the road of building, letting them build six or seven houses on there, there's all the services that come with that. So it's, it's not an ideal place, but we're not here to, we, we have no plan. So I, I'm, I don't know what the answer is, the council haven't provided me with the information I asked for. I think it's very dangerous to give any indication of what the council would or would not do. And I would think that it would be better for the council to say, we know your intentions and possibly when you're ready for something better, come back to us. You know, when they've got plans and things.
Is this going to extend on to allotments?
It is allotments.
In that case, that needs to go to the secretary of state to build on allotments.
Because they leased the car park, they've got two, they've got, they leased the car park as well, the car parking.
Yeah. But is this, is this extension going to take up some more allotment space?
It's allotment land, cap, sorry, term.
Is it going to take up some more allotment space?
Yes.
At the back? If that is so, then it has to go to the secretary of state.
It, it, that is only if it is still proper allotment land. I mean, do we know that?
Oh, well, they've got all sorts of things going on.
Term, when it was leased to them, it was general allotments and it's sort of on the end. Joyce remembers when they had that grossly dog training unit in there at one point. So it was in between that and the building and it was allotments. And they took it and it is just purely grass at the moment and fenced round. So that was my concern of wanting to see the allotment act is because when you have these things, there is that costly business of actually, it has to go out to public consultation through the secretary of state.
Because they're protected, allotments.
I don't know this, this particular paper, from listening to the conversation and reading this piece of paper, I think we need to defer this until we have a lot more information. We, we need to know whether the land is allotments, whether we need permission, whether we actually agreed to, what's gonna happen to the building? If, for instance, it all folds, do we, do we take ownership of the building because it's on our land? There are, there are a hundred and one questions we need to ask before this goes any further. Some plans and drawings, we need to know from the clerk about what the lease actually says at the moment. And so I would like to defer for further information.
And I completely agree with David there, in fact, maybe we should be going back to these people. Because in the comment here, it says they've met with their architect who is drawing, drawing up some more detailed plans. That says to me they've already got plans, they should have sent indicative plan or footprint of what they had. They've not done that and initially, not only should we defer it, we should initially write back to them saying the council cannot make a decision based on the fact that there is no information.
Thank you. I mean, as I said at the beginning, I'm also concerned. I mean, as I said at the beginning, I'm also concerned by, you know, the legal ramifications. The amount of money we're getting for this, we're simply getting peanuts for this. You know, it's worth four million pounds, and we're getting a few hundred pounds a year, I think the whole thing needs review.
My ground, then, you don't get much, I pay ten pound a year for my ground. But it's when, you know.
We'll give it a go on your land.
Well, you're very fortunate.
I think the proposal is, David's proposal is that it's deferred, because there's inadequate information, we need to write back to them saying that the council can't make a decision because we've got no information.
Sorry, chairman, we defer, we need a back, but we, so it's maybe that we don't, we, rather than saying defer, it's that we don't do anything until they come back to us. We're not making a decision. Yeah, we just make it clear that we cannot give a decision based on the information, because otherwise we do. Yeah, rather than deferring, just say that we're unfortunately not able to respond based on.
Because we need to read back, so we defer our items, what we need to tell them, we can't make a decision. Who's the proposer, David? David, who's seconded it? Adam. Who's on there, we don't have a representative on the, that group?
No, I don't, I didn't, so should I just ask? I didn't understand, councillor Lucas, in the minutes, it says that you and Jane Woodcock recommended that nobody represented us on the year two thousand and thirteen. But it's in the minutes, so on. We need to get someone back.
Number twenty, suspension of standing order twenty eight. And we have a proposal to suspend. What would you do, that's what we want to do, put someone on fine.
So why, what, the standing order twenty eighth then?
Suspend standing order.
Right. Why is it suspended? Bring it back.
Is that the, is it on board?
Oh, right.
Well, this is the problem with the six months rule.
Yeah, I, I'd actually have to bring it back in, so.
I do too, because it makes it look stupid.
You voted for it, you did.
I know, I got confused.
The proposal, the suspended party is.
To clarify, it's twenty eight, the, if we can revoke it, it should be narrowed to two thirds of the council's present minimum was six voting.
Yeah.
Right.
Proposal, right.
Proposal?
Yes.
Second vote?
We've just voted on it.
No, we wouldn't vote it on.
How many twenty eight?
Against?
Attentions?
I thought we discussed this.
No, we discussed standing orders, and standing orders was a matter of six.
This rule. And now we're applying to number twenty one, planning committee. And councillor Woodley, be elected a member of the planning committee.
Can I speak, Germaine? I'm a god, absolute a god. The last, the last meeting, I did point out to this council, the outside bodies, we are five members short. We are, we, we, we didn't allow the chairman to sit on the open town partnership. We haven't even elected anybody to sit on that tonight. We, we've still only got two people on policy and procedures, where we used to have four. And I take your note, chairman, and I, I take it with hope, I think is the best way, that we are going to look at how many people are on standing, on committees and working groups. Because we, and I am bitterly disappointed that we didn't get the restructuring paper, that we, we were told we'd become to this meeting. But we seem to have found time to let somebody on to the planning committee. And that's, this is where I'm a bit of a god, because we have so many outstanding, but we still managed to find one. No disrespect to you, sir.
Yes.
I would like to respond, Jim.
Because at the end of the day.
That's the big committee.
The important committees like the finance, policies, have only got two members on. At one point, when I first joined this council, the OCC working group had one member. And out of all the papers we get and all the procedures and the, let's change this, let's change that, let's change the other. The one thing that never seemed to get picked up is the fact that, that many people leave a committee and we haven't filled it the next month. Why not? And for nearly a year, from what I understand, there was only one member organised in the leasing of our property.
Yes.
One member.
That's my direction, Brian. I mean, I don't totally disagree, but rest assured, next month they will all be coming forward, because I, I don't want to be sitting on committees with just one other person. I think the, this planning one came forward, the clerk will confirm, that those council will be five hundred and seventy. Yes, expressment, particularly, like I was saying.
My say is, I actually would be putting myself forward to as many committees as possible. The only reason I put this one, because it was my first, I sat observing some aptitudes, which is fair enough, and some, some problems we had, understanding certain terms, which I could help with. So I thought, oh, immediately I could add some value to that, like the process and the policies. When it comes up for consideration, I will be putting my hand up to volunteer to do all of the committees you'll let me on. Because I do not want to sit as a passive member of the council. So if it's not this one, I'm quite happy to join the next one, however dull, thank you.
So are we going to throw in this one?
No, 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 I, I would like to, I'd like to make a comment, and then I'd like to make an amendment. The first comment is based on the fact that it's highly unusual that a member is named. It's normally a case that is committee or council, but I, I also expressed an interest. So it should have been, if we're only going to increase it by one space, then I would have put my name forward as well. And the correct procedure would have been for the council to vote who they wanted to put on. So my, my counterproposal to this is that, because of fairness, because the open southeast ward is not represented on this committee. And no disrespect to the keen people on open councillor Lucas's ward, I think it's councillor's ward because of Lucas on. Every member is on that ward. Now, I would like to go back to the situation, I'd like to go back to the situation where planning is open to everybody. And, 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 so my, yes, I know, but, so my counterproposal is, that, my counterproposal is, because obviously I feel that I would like to go back on it. Because it's frustrating sitting there and just being told I've noted your comment, no disrespect to you, chairman. But that's an improvement that members are allowed to talk, but you don't take, they don't take any notice really of what was said. Well, no, sorry, that's how I felt, but, so my counterproposal is that the number is increased if the council fills by two more members at this stage. And both members who expressed an interest from the open southeast ward are permitted to join that committee.
Excuse me, can I say something? If we're going to have such a very large one, this is no disrespect to anybody, we might as well have the whole council.
But that's what we're going to get to.
Excuse me, I'm speaking, Martin.
But I made a proposal.
Well, I'm just saying something else, I'm allowed to. How many people are here tonight? Two, four, six, eight, we'll have nine on the planning committee, which, excuse me, I'm speaking. So therefore, why not have this planning at the whole council meeting if it's going to be so big?
Yes, I would like it, Mo, because actually, if I'm, if I'm corrupted, chairman, on to it, I can't actually come to the Tuesday one, because I'm at the Job Centre.
Chairman, will you excuse me, I've really just got to go on the top of the door.
They don't want me to go on it, that's why they're making a fuss. So, so, chairman, I have a proposal, is that it's increased by two members to include both, both members of the open southeast ward, so that we are fairly represented.
Well, hang on a minute, hang on, please. We've got a specific agenda, right?
But I've asked to amend that with a proposal.
I mean, in the past, when we've done it, we, we have people put their names forward, we've voted on them individually, so there's nothing quite, no issue with any of the members wanting to go on to it. So I think we should deal with the current issue, which councillor Woodley brought to thing, and go with him, and then look at my proposal, which we've put itself forward.
No, no, my proposal is on the table, that we, we change it to eight members, and that we both consider.
That would be nine, then. Could I just say something?
Seven, eight, nine, sorry, yes.
Could I just say something now, please, that since there's, it's actually being on the agenda next month about committees, we could defer this till next month. Because it would make more sense when it's all lined out, how we're going to spread this out, because perhaps we might have to make the planning committee smaller. So I would suggest quite strongly, although we have been trained now, so we're all up to date with everything, that we actually defer this till next month, when all of these things are going to be discussed.
Chairman, I'm sorry, point of order, I have a proposal on the table, and the councillors suggested my figure's wrong. This says seven, making it to seven, she keeps telling me it's going to be nine, but it will make it up to eight. So my proposal, and it's on the table, is that that is amended to eight members and two of the open southeast ward councillors. Yeah, because it says it will increase to seven.
One more. Councillor Brooks suggests. I, I think, I'm, I'm not sure.
And that's my proposal.
But, obviously, frankly, there's a proposal on the table, but there is a, there is a proposal, is there a second one to that? There is a second one.
Are you clear by what I'm saying on that proposal?
Proposing you and Nick.
Yeah, basically, I'm proposing to a pre-sit today, and it's me.
Have you just told him what's on the committee already, because I think there's already seven on.
This will make it eight.
You.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yes.
Paul, and then somebody else.
Nick, Nick.
No, somebody else is already on it, there was, there were definitely seven there on the table, the last meeting, when we travelled into that.
No, six. There's six on, this would make seven, but the amendment would make eight. Anyway, we've got a proposal and a second one.
So to increase to eight members, we need to include councillor Brooks.
Councillor Woodley and Brooks. All those in favour? Against?
Just because it's going to be too big, we'll never get through.
That's why we're just voting two against.
As a parish council, we're supposed to have.
I'm going upstate. So it carries.
Thank you.
That is just.
It's not, it's, it's not a big. He gave the wrong information, Anna, for last meeting, but Anna's now saying I'm not allowed on working groups, so this is the problem. People are giving this information, no, there are no sanctions, right?
We've achieved what we wanted.
And unfortunately, chairman, unfortunately, chairman, because they refused to have the meetings when councillor Lucas suggested, and I suggested in the evening, I have to give my apologies for next week, because I will be at the Job Centre. And they do it on purpose.
Without doing respect, Martin, I was told by the chairman of the council, that if I went on the committee, because I went during the day, the committee would change, because they would have to move it to the evening, so I would take that. So I don't see why Joyce and yourself.
Well, they won't, they won't pudge it, they won't pudge it, people have asked and asked.